True. How about you, Mary Ann? You get to... Now, you're covering a larger territory, but do you get to see this face-to-face?
I do. I do. There was a gentleman that calls me almost every month and orders over the phone. He's an older gentleman, so he doesn't have internet access. But he wants to bless people in his church. And he says, "Oh, I found another one." And his heart just is, you know, troubled by the fact that they do not have food for their families. And so, it's just so gratifying to be involved in this, where for $30, you know, people spend that on Starbucks in a week.
Oh, do they ever. Do they ever.
And they can feed an entire family. So, it's really a beautiful thing to be involved with.
And it's okay to make a minor sacrifice, too. You know, you could kind of remind yourself, "I don't need to stop at the gourmet coffee shop today."
Absolutely. Absolutely. And make a difference and an impact in the lives of a family. And really, you know, that may be the only food they got for the month.
And we'll never forget that. Ever.
Well, and nor should they. But again, it's pay it forward. If someone's helped you, I know with my foundation, that's exactly the deal. If I help you, you help the next person in line.
Absolutely.
And that's what builds our country and makes it great.
Absolutely. Now, let me ask a question about, can people volunteer to come help? I mean, this has got to be labor-intensive to pack up these boxes and get them to where they need to go.
Yeah. Actually, where the most volunteerism is needed is actually at the locations. So, one Saturday a month, you can see the Saturdays on our website. You can actually, you can contact the Treasure Box and we'll be more than happy to get you into the right direction in your neighborhood. But you can call the church directly. We talked to many representatives from our partner organizations that say, you know, "We need hands and feet to come help." So, contact them and say, "Hey, I'm a neighbor and I would love to come down and help one Saturday and help unload the truck," or help pass boxes out. Or help an elderly or senior citizen that can't carry their boxes, it's a bit heavy to their car, and bless them that way. So, there's a number of ways to serve.
Oh, I'm thinking of some of our traditional community groups, you know, Kiwanis, Opus, Moose, all the roles that can come out there. Now, unfortunately, we are, we're out of time for today's program of Aging in L.A. Thanks so much to our guests from the Treasure Box, Mary Ann Richards and David Leonard. And now, it's time for today's Senior Stat Shot. For seniors, the benefits of healthy nutritious eating include increased mental acuteness, resistance to illness and disease, higher energy levels, a more robust immune system, faster recuperation times, and better management of chronic health problems. Approximately one in every three seniors in Los Angeles has difficulty affording nutritious food. And one in six seniors receives food from nutrition programs and food banks in the city. According to a recent UCLA study, nearly half a million seniors living alone in California cannot make ends meet and lack sufficient income to pay for a minimum level of health care, food, housing, transportation, and other basics. Free-of-charge lunches are available on weekdays at the Department of Aging's multipurpose senior centers. You can call 1-800-510-2020, that's 1-800-510-2020, to find your nearest senior center. In California, the Food Stamp Program is now called SNAP. SNAP cards can be used to purchase food from participating supermarkets, grocery stores, farmers' markets, and special programs. Seniors aged 60 or older may qualify for SNAP. To apply for SNAP, call Los Angeles County Public Social Services at 1-877-597-4777. That's 1-877-597-4777. To maintain a healthy diet, try to reduce the amount of salt, sugar, and fats in your daily eating. Increase the amount of fiber, fruit, and vegetables, and drink water regularly to stay hydrated. And that's today's Senior Stat Shot. I'm Paul Peterson for the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A. Thanks for watching. We'll see you the next time. Mary Ann?
Need a recycling center? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall. Illegally parked cars? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you to Councilmembers Coretts and Labange and Smith, who are here. We do not expect Ms. Perry or Mr. Reyes, or Mr. Parks, maybe arriving late as well. So, that leaves Councilmembers Alarcon, Park, and these are Corcoran, Rosendahl, Westen, and Zine. They're all pleased. There's Mr. Zine, Mr. Corcoran, thank you. So, we're up to six members, and as soon as we have 10, we'll begin. And thank you to everybody for patience and a very good point. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Friday, April 1st, 2011. We're here in the Van Nuys City Hall chambers. We meet here every other month on the first Friday. And want to thank everybody and good to be back in the Valley here in Van Nuys. Thank you to those council members who are here on time. We do meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And on Fridays, we have special presentations for notable organizations, occasions, and individuals who have influenced the city of Los Angeles or that are important to our city. And today is no different. We do have a number of presentations coming up shortly. But in the meantime, want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35 and also want to welcome those on the internet at lacity.org, where you can catch these meetings. And also, you can tune in to find our agendas and supporting material for everything. You also can listen in on your phone through 213-621-CITY. That's called Council Phone to listen in to our meetings as well. We have speaker cards for any items you'd like to be heard on. And Mr. Smith, did you want to make an announcement?
Inquire if the haircut was an April Fool's joke or are you going to do your Navy duty?
I'm sorry, are we talking about Mr. Zine?
Yeah, no, no, he doesn't do haircuts.
I'd like to also announce that Councilmember Smith has agreed this morning to step down early and to retire. Mr. Englander was sworn in this morning, and we'll be here shortly to relieve Mr. Smith. We thank him for years of service to the people of Los Angeles.
Adios, mi amigos.
Yes. Yeah, no, I won't. But yeah, leave your tie behind, please. With that, we will begin our presentations and like to invite Council District 5 and Paul Coretts to give our first presentation to the Valley Torah Boys High School.
I'm getting writer's cramp just looking at it.
Bob, I am going to get writer's cramp. These are thank you letters for my contributors.
Well, listen, that's a problem you want to have.
That's right. I just don't like it, they piled up, you know, like you've been doing them for a long time.
Does there sound now? This, okay. Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. Actually, we have two presentations today, and the second one is stuck at security trying to get in. So, we will do our first one. And this is a recognition of April as Autism Awareness Month nationwide. Autism is a communication and social disorder that affects 1 in 110 children worldwide, more than pediatric cancer, juvenile diabetes, childhood AIDS, and other diseases combined. My guests today are part of an organization that is one of the largest, most innovative, and comprehensive nonprofits of its kind in the United States, serving children with special needs relating to autism. And this group is the Help Group. It is truly a pleasure to introduce President and CEO of the Help Group, Barbara Firestone. And since 1975, the Help Group has become a cornerstone for serving children with special needs relating to autism spectrum disorders, or ASD, learning disabilities, ADHD, mental retardation, abuse, and emotional problems. The Help Group has not only enhanced the quality of life in their students, but also positively affected families and provided innovative approaches to specialized education programs nationwide. They have seven specialized day schools that offer pre-K through high school programs for more than 1,300 students. Recently, they completed a new wing at the Sherman Oaks campus, which we're happy about because that'll allow them to ensure students and their families with access to top-notch key services. So, again, I thank the Help Group, and we turn it over to Barbara Firestone.
Oh, I thank you. Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Good morning, everyone. As President and CEO of the Help Group and Chair of the Statewide Coordinating Council of Autism Task Forces of the Senate Select Committee on Autism and Related Disorders, I am so glad to be here this morning at the invitation of Councilmember Paul Coretts in recognition of National Autism Awareness Month that begins today and World Autism Awareness Day that takes place tomorrow. The Help Group is dedicated to helping young people with autism and other special needs. At the heart of our efforts is the commitment to helping young people fulfill their potential to lead positive, productive, and rewarding lives. To provide a lifeline of help, hope, and opportunity to the ever-growing number of children who need our help, we cut the ribbon at our fifth campus, the state-of-the-art Autism Center, just January 24th, located in Sherman Oaks, in Councilmember Coretts's district. And I'd like to just take a moment to thank Councilmember Coretts and his staff for their wonderful support of this project. This center features an intervention and day school center, a research, training, and conference center, and a theater and arts complex. And I can't tell you how pleased we were when Councilmembers Coretts and Corcoran joined us for the festivities when we cut the ribbon. Since this month is about autism awareness, I'd like just to take a few moments to share some information with you. Autism spectrum disorders, commonly referred to as autism, are brain-based developmental disabilities characterized by language and communication problems, impaired social interaction, and repetitive, rigid behaviors and interests. The symptoms of autism vary wildly from child to child and range from moderate to severe. In the '60s and '70s, autism was considered a rare disorder and was estimated to affect four to five children per 10,000. Today, the CDC reports that 1 in every 110 children in the United States are affected by autism spectrum disorders. ASD, autism spectrum disorders, are four times more common in boys than girls and occur in children of all racial, ethnic, and socioeconomic backgrounds. So, 1 in every 70 boys is affected. Symptoms can be detected by 18 months of age or earlier. When parents first suspect that early signs of autism may be present, they should discuss these concerns with their pediatrician and ask for an autism screening. Research indicates that early intervention, early identification, and intensive early intervention can result in significant positive outcomes for many children with autism. Another startling statistic is that 84% of individuals with autism in California are under the age of 22, which has implications for autism agenda. We have autism fast facts and an early warning sign flyers with us today, if any of you would like to have this information. Autism imposes many formidable challenges for each child, adolescent, young adult, individual, and family whose lives it touches. It is a difficult journey, a journey that our collective efforts can make easier by continuing the agenda of opening new pathways of hope that are defined by opportunity and access to programs and services. These collective efforts contribute to the field, and the momentum in the field has never been greater than it is today. With the exposure of the issues of autism by the mainstream media and other public awareness efforts, the public is becoming better informed and eager for change. Advocacy groups continue to promote awareness and positive change. And these advocacy groups are most often fueled by parents and families who, in seeking solutions and answers for their children, embrace other children and help create a brighter path. Science moves forward in both basic and applied research. Public policies are being examined and reshaped to address the compelling needs for services. Lastly, the stigma of autism is in the process of being fully and forever lifted by the light of greater understanding and acceptance. Society is becoming more fully engaged in the hope and opportunity agenda. Even in these fiscally challenging times, the forces for change move forward as we continue to work together to build brighter futures for individuals with autism and their families. On behalf of the autism community, I would like to thank you for all of your efforts, for your support, and for your ongoing commitment. Thank you.
And while you're here on behalf of Autism Month, we would like to present a certificate of appreciation to the Help Group.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Coretts, and thank you so much to the Help Group, and thank you for the great words. So many families and lives are touched by autism, and we appreciate the continuing work you do in that area.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Coretts, you want to wait for your second one, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We will then turn to Council District 3, and Councilmember Dennis P. Zine, who also announced his resignation earlier today. But it was rejected. Thank you. While he's going there, I'm sorry, Mr. Zine is out of order. If you can have him removed from chambers for this April 1st. But while he's making his way to the podium, Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll? We do have 10 members.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Han, Weezer, Coretts, Corcoran, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Westen, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Labange second, without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Corcoran moves, and Mr. Weezer second, without objection. Mr. Zine, if you don't mind, let's just run through the agenda real quick to see if there's any consent items.
That's fine.
Folks, if you have any items you'd like to call special, now, we will turn to the first item. So, first items, please.
Items 1 through 6 are items for which public hearings have been held. Item 1 is an ordinance. Would you like to hold it on the desk until 12 members are present?
I will call that special. I believe Mr. Parks is going to be here, and I'll call that special for him. 6 for Mr. Rosendahl. Any other specials, 2 through 5? Not seeing any. Let's go ahead, prepare the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
All right, those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 7 through 15 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
If there's no objection to consideration, those are before us, and we do have cards on 8, 9, and 10. Call those special for cards from the public, close the public hearings on the other items. Anybody wishing to call any of those special?
Pardon me, sir. I do believe we have a card on number 15 as well.
I'm sorry, and 15 as well. Didn't see that up here. Oh, there it is, hiding. And Mr. Coretts, I know he's going to call 9 special as well as the cards. That leaves 7 and 11 through 14. If nobody wishes to call those special, let's go ahead on the balance, and please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those items are approved. With that, we'll return to Mr. Dennis P. Zine for our next presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I was inferring that we continue the president that we currently have.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Of course you were. We reject your resignation, though.
Well, on this April Fool's Day, we can play jokes once in a while. But what I have here is a very significant effort that happened in the district. And if I can please have the folks from Reseda High School that are here? Reseda High School? Come on forward, please. This is recognition for four Reseda High School personnel. And there was a tragic situation that occurred, and the heroic action of these folks saved a life. And we have with us, and we'll make sure they're all here, Sherri Wiley, Special Assistant Education Assistant. Good morning. Wes Bateman. Wes, good morning. Emmanuel Sisneros, Security Man. Okay. Well, we'll turn around and back and say. There you go, Security. Okay, you are the right one. And Denise Ozer Bell, good morning. Here's what occurred. It's the principal and the coordinator, are they here? Oh, okay. You're going to be the paparazzi. Okay, well, we'll keep you under control over there. All right. What occurred, the situation occurred where Sherri Wiley, Denise, Wes, were across the street from the high school during their lunch break on Thursday, March 23rd. And they do that almost every day. When they witnessed two teenage girls walk past them upon dismissal from Zane Gray Continuation School. Shortly afterwards, four young men walked by, two of which were former students of Denise, and whom did not stop to say hi, which was out of the ordinary. Wes watched the boys cross the street and go to Reseda Park. Once the young men arrived at Reseda Park, they were met by a different group of young men, unknown to any of the three Reseda High School representatives. At that moment, Wes saw one of the boys raise a gun and shoot the other young man. He yelled at Denise and Sherri, "Gun!" As soon as it happened, all three of them responded without a thought. What occurred after that, Wes ran toward the front gate of the high school, alerted Emmanuel Sisneros to security that a young man was shot outside the school. Wes then ran to the scene and offered his assistance, helped control the scene by keeping the victim's friends calm and away from the victim. Emmanuel Sisneros to security, called other security personnel on his radio to inform him of the shooting. He then contacted the administrator to institute the school lockdown procedure and responded to the scene. Sherri immediately called 911. The shooter ran past her, almost knocking her cellphone out of her hand. She spoke to LAPD dispatch to explain the situation. She then ran over to the park, with the eyes and ears of the dispatcher, explaining in detail the situation. She stayed on the phone until the ambulance arrived at the scene. And Denise asked Wes for his sweatshirt and t-shirt in order to use as dressing for the wounds. Obviously, you have some first aid... You hopefully have some first aid training. We all did. Denise ran directly toward the victim, right past the shooter. She was able to assess the extent of the injuries to the victim and began first aid. She then asked Emmanuel to cut the victim's sweatshirt, exposing the wound so she could get a better vantage point, which to stop the bleeding. After wrestling with the victim to remove his own hand, she applied direct pressure to the entrance wound. Emmanuel helped Denise roll the victim on his side in order to apply pressure to the exit wound in his back, which was bleeding profusely. The victim was going in and out of consciousness. Denise spoke to him, trying to keep him awake, performed the first aid until the ambulance finally arrived at the scene with LAPD officers who secured the scene. And thanks to the heroic action of these individuals from the school, the four Reseda, these four Reseda personnel, the young men survived this vicious attack and shooting. So, on behalf of the people of Los Angeles, we want to acknowledge what you folks did to save a life in this tragic situation and not running backward, running toward to help out. So, we have for Sherri, for Wes, for Denise, and for Emmanuel. And these folks from Reseda High School did the heroic action and ultimately saved the life of this individual who was attacked in the shooting situation. I want to give each individual an opportunity to say a few words, and we'll start with... Well, Wiley's going to speak. Call for Security. Emmanuel, get up here.
I just want to thank you for this great opportunity. It's nothing really special, it's something we were supposed to do. It's just, I guess, I don't know. Anybody would have done it in that situation.
Well, not anybody, not everybody.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. There's so much that we all do at Reseda, and it sometimes feels like you're not recognized. And really, this is, we wouldn't have done anything differently, and just thank you very much.
Just thank you, and I don't know that I even thought. I just did what I needed to do. I just reacted, and the award is just awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a little overwhelming, to be quite honest. You just hope everybody else would do the same thing in a situation like that. Thank you.
We do appreciate it, because there are situations, and tragic situations, where people stand back, don't get involved, don't even pick up the phone to call anyone. You folks went above and beyond. We want to acknowledge that and appreciate what you did to save a life. So, let's hear it. Congratulations.
I'd like to, before you go, before you guys go, Mr. Zine, actually, there's another council member who would like to say something as well. Mr. Cardenas.
I want to thank you, Councilmember Zine, for reminding us that public safety is a matter that is truly in the hands of everybody in this city. However, I just want to thank all of you individuals for showing the courage and the wisdom of actually thinking. You mentioned that you weren't, maybe you weren't thinking when you did what you did.
I reacted.
Yes, you were. You weren't thinking so much with your brain as much as you were thinking with your brain, your heart, and your gut. And to me, that's what makes us human beings so different than all the other beings that walk around on this earth. And today is a perfect opportunity for us to say thank you for being the representative of your higher self. And I'm sure that, I don't know if your parents are around or what have you, or your grandparents, whoever raised you. what have you, or your grandparents who ever raised you, but I'm sure when they hear what you did, they will be saying, "That's my kid. That's the person that I raised. That's the person that I wanted that person to be." So I just wanted to say thank you so much. It's not easy. You're absolutely wrong. Not everybody would have done it. There's countless opportunities for us to witness that in situations when perhaps one person is around, or 500 people around, sometimes no one rises to be their better self. You all did that in the face of danger, but more importantly, in the face of an opportunity to save a life. So thank you so much. We're very grateful for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and congratulations again. And thank you, Mr. Zein, for that great recognition. We do have, I think, a desire on item one to continue that until Tuesday if there's no objection from Mr. Parks. Let's go ahead and continue that until Tuesday's meeting. And our next presentation will be Council District Seven and Councilmember Richard Alarcon.
Good morning. As you know, councilmembers, the city is in a tremendous transition, and we're losing a lot of employees who have a lot of experience with the city. We wish them well, and we thank them for their tremendous service to the city. One such person is Paul Muntz. He has worked for the city for 35 years. He's an experienced plumber and plumbing technical advisor, and he poured his projects into, excuse me, he poured his heart into all his projects, including some of LA's most recognizable landmarks. He settled in Los Angeles in 1968 after moving here from New York City. He began his career with the city on October 14th, 1974, as a construction plumber with General Services. In 1986, Paul transferred to the Underground Tank Program as a senior plumber. He spent four years running the program, testing and repairing underground tanks and piping. He transferred to the Bureau of Engineering, Construction Management Division in 1990 as a plumber, excuse me, as a plumbing technical advisor, where he worked on major projects that include the Richard Reardon Library, Newton 77th, and North Hollywood LAPD Community Police Stations, LAPD Emergical Vehicle Operations Center, Taylor Yard Park, Pico Garnier Building at El Pueblo, Griffith Park Observatory, City Hall with Project Restore, and the Seismic Rehabilitation and Restoration Project. And although Paul is no longer on the city payroll, he continues to volunteer with LAPD North Hollywood, and that's why I am presenting this today. I can tell you that he and his wife, Sandra, worked for, actually, many years to get the senior lead officers back on with LAPD. As you know, about, I want to say about eight or nine years ago, we moved away from the senior lead positions, and many, many people, particularly those who had always volunteered and worked closely with LAPD in the community, were very disappointed and wanted those senior leads back. Well, we changed that policy again a few years after that, but I can tell you that Sandra, in particular, and Paul, worked with the community, encouraging people to fight to get those senior lead positions back. And so, as much as we appreciate Paul's work with the city of Los Angeles, it's also his concern for Los Angeles that I think stands out. And because of him and his wife's passion for public safety and the police department, and most importantly, building the relationship between our communities and the police department, so that we are not having the police serve the community, but actually are part of the community. And so, we want to thank them both for contributing to the city of Los Angeles for the 35 years, but also for their volunteer spirit and their tenacity in restoring, helping to restore the senior lead program. So with that, I want to present this resolution to Paul, and say thank you so much again for all the work that you do, but most importantly, for not just coming to work eight hours a day, but even after work, volunteering in our community to make our community safer. Thank you so much, Paul.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank everyone. Thank you. It was a great career.
And I'd like to say thank you, too, because Richard was the groundbreaker that helped us get the slows back. He was the first one that jumped in, stood up, went up to the plate, and started the fight to get our slows back. Thanks, Richard.
Thank you so much, and congratulations again. Thank you very much, Mr. Alarcon.
Thank you.
Our next presentation, we have Valley Tora, Valley Tora Boys' High School, and Mr. Kretz.
Well, this is a large group. Hopefully, everybody made it through security. Thank you, Mr. President and members. I have the distinct pleasure and honor to introduce the Boys' Varsity Basketball Team, along with their coaches, faculty, and staff from Valley Tora High School. For those of you who don't know, Valley Tora High School is a tremendous school where they form character and achieve the highest standards of academic excellence in the North Hollywood Valley Village area of our city. Its rigorous dual curriculum sets an example for other schools to follow, and we all know that when you leave Valley Tora, you are truly a mentee, as well as a great student. This year, Valley Tora High School has gone one step further. On March 5th, they won the Southern Section Division 6A-A Championship, making it the first Orthodox Jewish school to win the CIF title. The top-seeded Wolf Pack got off to a bad start in the first quarter and trailed by nine points with only seven minutes or so remaining, but ultimately rallied to defeat the number-two seeded Bishop Diego, 58-51, in the championship game. The Valley Tora Wolf Pack went on to win in the first round of the statewide CIF Division V Basketball Tournament on March 8th, and despite showing tremendous chutzpah, class, determination, and grace, unfortunately, lost in the quarterfinals by one point. However, I know next year you'll come back stronger as you seek to advance further into the tournament, so not only can we say next year in Jerusalem, we can say next year in the CIF. I'd like to commend and celebrate the entire basketball team, coaches Robert Eichart, Noel Bloom, and Adam Levitt, assistant coaches Mark Rogers and Richie Gano, hopefully I'm pronouncing that right, school dean Rabbi Stulberger, and principals Randy Rutschman, who was actually a wonderful teacher for my daughter Rachel years before when she had him, and Rabbi David Feld. Your display of teamwork and camaraderie has inspired and delighted your school, the community, the San Fernando Valley, and the entire city of Los Angeles. So congratulations, and mazel tov, and if we can ask Rabbi Stulberger to come and say a few words on behalf of the school.
Cheers. Pura. Congratulations. You've got six minutes. No, I don't need six minutes. I just want to say thank you on behalf of the entire team and the entire school. It's a wonderful honor, and I believe a very well-deserved honor, not just because of their prowess on the basketball court, but for us, we're people of the book, and these young men really performed to an incredible level, not just in terms of their talents, but the camaraderie, the sportsmanship, the, as they say, kiddush eshem. We, I think, represented ourselves beautifully on the court. Many schools commented about the way we played and the sportsmanship that we exhibited, to attribute to the coaching staff, and I think the overall direction and overall atmosphere that our administrators create. It's a tribute to everyone, but most importantly, a wonderful tribute to these young men who really have shown tremendous class in everything that they've done. We wish them all brachavat sacha, success in the future endeavors, and I want to thank Mr. Kretz and the entire city council for this wonderful honor. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Laban, we'd like to add his good wishes. Tom Laban?
Coach Kretz, because Coach Kretz, I call him that, because not only you guys are champions, he had the football champions from Fairfax High just a few weeks ago, so you're the leading champion. Give Coach Kretz a big hand right there. Rabbi, I followed in the newspapers the team. I want to see the two brothers stand up there. Where's the two brothers? Get them up there. These are the guys who I read in the paper about, which is so special, the leadership. One year, CIF champions. Nobody could take that away from you, and the hard work and the great work of the coaches. I just wanted to join with Mr. Kretz and all of us, and salute you, champs. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Kretz, and as a Jew who likes to play basketball, thank you guys for giving us some hope. We appreciate it very much. And also, I'd like to present a commendation for the high school.
And also, I have commendations for all the students who participated. I won't hand them out here, this will take a while, but...
Mr. Laban, who's the greatest living Jewish basketball player in the NBA right now?
I want to pass to my good friend, Mr. Kretz, that he's going to...
Jordan Farmar.
Jordan Farmar, very good from UCLA.
Absolutely.
Actually, it should have been me, but... Mr. Kretz would like to announce his resignation today as well, to pursue a career in the NBA. Breaking news.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it, guys. Watch yourself on Channel 35 tonight. We're on lacity.org. Check it out. Our next presentation is... All right, our next presentation is Councilmember Alarcon. Nope, not yet. Then it's Dennis Zein again. I'm sorry, I'd like to apologize in advance to everybody. It's Dennis Zein at the podium again.
Okay, Mr. President Garcetti. If I can have, please, Captain Romero, LAPD's Gang and Narcotics Division, Leanne Moore, President of Southern California Division, Clerk Jan Lador, Paul Rax, Officer of Community Beautification, and Daniel Reese, President of West Valley Alliance, join me. Where's the other folks? Daniel, Paul, Daniel? Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. We are here to acknowledge and talk about a problem and maybe hopefully some solutions. This is about graffiti in the city of Los Angeles. Throughout our beautiful city and the county, graffiti vandals continue to plague neighborhoods and destroy property. Graffiti is a serious problem throughout this region, affecting residents, property owners, business, and citizens of our great city and county. Los Angeles spends more than $7 million a year cleaning up over 32,000 square feet of graffiti at over 645,000 locations. This doesn't include the graffiti on vehicles that we oftentimes see on commercial vehicles. The spread of graffiti often leads to violence, life-threatening situations, and perpetration of gangs, gang violence, and gang territories. They mark their territory by tagging. Graffiti is not art. It's a public nuisance that must be eliminated by means of prevention, education, and abatement to avoid the negative impact to the residents of our city of the angels. In my district, we have coordinated graffiti stings, Tagger Probation Task Force operations to send a message that graffiti won't be tolerated in the San Fernando Valley. When someone's arrested and put on probation, we then go in and do probation searches at 6 o'clock in the morning to make sure they're complying with the law. And today, I'm here to recognize various entities and their efforts to eradicate graffiti throughout the city of Los Angeles. As a reserve officer with the LAPD, I work the Citywide Graffiti Task Force, and LAPD has established a Citywide Graffiti Task Force under the command of Detective Finley. Citywide Graffiti Task Force conducts surveillance operations to stake out graffiti vandals and arrest them. And I invite Captain Romero to say a few words about the task force, and Captain?
Yes, of course.
There you go.
Thank you. Councilman Zein, thank you very much for the opportunity, and you have stated it right. You know, we have, under my command, I have the Graffiti Task Force that's assigned to Gang and Narcotics Division, and it's a very, very valuable unit that we have in the city. They deal with many, many issues of blight. They have overall responsibility throughout the entire city and all the bureaus, and as the councilman mentioned, we do work quite a bit of surveillance, and we do target the specific vandals who are associated with multi-crimes throughout the city of Los Angeles. This is a very important issue for Gang and Narcotics, and it's a very, very important issue to the LAPD, and we applaud your efforts, Councilman, for what you do for us, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Cap. And we have the Office of Community Beautification, OCB, serves as a resource for community improvement programs throughout the city of Los Angeles. This program, designed to empower neighborhoods and community groups by utilizing the services, participants improve their environment by building partnerships with the city of Los Angeles. They operate a graffiti hotline, 311, to which residents may report graffiti. Work orders are referred to community-based graffiti removal programs contracted through the city. These agencies supervise community volunteers, as well as juveniles and adults who have received community service time from the courts. They also monitor the online anti-graffiti request system, which can be assessed by visiting lacity.org. Mr. Paul Rax is here to say a few words about his work, his dedicated work through the community beautification. Paul?
Yes, sir.
You snuck around the other time.
Thank you, I did, thank you. Good morning, Paul Roach, with the Office of Community Beautification, Board of Public Works, and it's certainly our pleasure to be working with the Office of Councilman Zein on the programs out here in the West Valley. As was mentioned, you know, over 32 million square feet of graffiti was removed in the last fiscal year, and unfortunately, we're probably going to be looking at decreased services in the upcoming fiscal year as far as graffiti abatement. So these types of efforts, you know, Councilman Weezer and the Taggers program, and Councilman Garcetti and the Untagged program, and those types of things are what we're really going to need to focus on if we're going to really work on reducing the amount of graffiti in the city of Los Angeles. So thank you very much.
And I take graffiti very seriously, and the quality of life in the district very seriously, and we have West Valley Alliance. It's a nonprofit 501(c)(3) community-based organization. The mission is to address some of the needs of the residents of the San Fernando Valley, and Daniel Reese and the West Valley Alliance have been serving my district with innovative programs that improve the quality of life throughout the valley for graffiti removal, weed abatement, to after-school programs. The programs are funded by the City of Los Angeles Department of Public Works Zero Tolerance Graffiti Removal Program. The program has had a major impact on the problem of graffiti proliferating in the San Fernando Valley, but despite budget cuts, and I anticipate more budget cuts, graffiti is almost always removed within 36 hours. The West Valley Alliance monitors the hotspots and calls out the necessary crews to remove the blight in my district and other parts of the San Fernando Valley. And Daniel has assisted the police with apprehension of graffiti vandals, spoken to community groups to educate them in identifying taggers, monikers, and the importance of reporting graffiti and having it removed as quickly as possible. The services provided by Daniel Weeze and the West Valley Alliance are truly immeasurable, and I invite Daniel to come up and say a few words on behalf of the alliance.
Thank you, Councilman Zein. We've been removing graffiti in the West Valley area for over 10 years, and it's easier for a contractor to have the support of Councilmember Zein and also Councilmember Smith. We also have involvement from the three police divisions that cover our area, the West Valley, Topanga, and Demosure. Together is the only way that we have reduced the graffiti activity in our area. I know that Councilman Zein is, will be talking a little bit about the reward, the $1,000 reward, and I wanted to give my point of view, my advice, to those who will be calling that number, that over the last several years, we've seen that a lot of the graffiti activity happens around the schools, both the middle schools and the high schools, and it usually happens about a half an hour before school starts and a half an hour after school lets out. So that would be my focus if you are interested in catching some of these vandals. Also, it is extremely important to have a contact with law enforcement. That way, when you call in this activity, you will have a personal contact with law enforcement, and your chances of receiving some of this funding will increase tenfold. Thank you.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you, Daniel. I'm not done yet, Candido, not yet. You plug when I'm done. But you can apply any time on April Fool's Day. So, tagging is illegal. It is not art, it is illegal. The city has various programs designed to deal with the prevention and eradication. Mostly falls to the residents to report tagging. The residents see it and they're the ones who we rely on to report it and hopefully bring it to an end. Now, what we have is a new component, and my staff's going to pass these out to my colleagues. And it says, "1,000 dollar reward offered for the arrest and conviction of graffiti vandals." And it's got a phone number. And this is a program that we put together with the Police Department, it's in my office, and Clear Channel. Clear Channel Outdoor supports local nonprofit public service, community groups, law enforcement, government agencies, to help them more efficiently and effectively reach the community and accomplish the mission. They give public safety officials the ability to share real-time information to the community. Clear Channel Outdoor annually donates more than $6 million worth of advertising space to Southern California groups to help them share timely public service messages and reach the community. And we partnered with Clear Channel to design a public service announcement to spread the word about the city's graffiti apprehension reward. Many people are not aware that there is a $1,000 reward when you report an individual who's tagging a community. The arrest and conviction, you can receive $1,000. Clear Channel has begun displaying the information regarding the graffiti apprehension reward on 50 billboards citywide during their public service time. The ads tout the $1,000 reward for the arrest and conviction of the vandals. And I have with us this morning our new president, the Southern California Division, Leon Moore, the Clear Channel Outdoor representative, is here to say a few words. And thank you for the donation.
You are very welcome. Thank you, members of the City Council, and thank you, Councilman Zine. We, um, are very happy to be working with the councilman and the city in order to hopefully attack and work towards the resolution of this problem. As a business that often is, uh, uh, the victim of graffiti, we have a great appreciation for what the magnitude is in the city. So, we're hopeful that this will benefit the city and help to resolve the issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We've got a few other councilmembers who'd like to speak.
Well, I'm not done yet.
I know, but you're like five minutes over, so we'll hear them real quick.
So, the, the ads tout the $1,000 reward offered to arrest and conviction, and what we want to do is make sure that people report it, 911, not 911, 311. If they see it in progress, to call 911. And we commend the Police Department for having a full-time detail to make this happen. But we have recognition for Clear Channel Outdoor, thank you. West Valley Alliance, thank you, Daniel. Office of Community Beautification, Paul, thank you. The LAPD's Gang and Narcotics Division Graffiti Task Force, Captain, and for Detective, too, Raymond Finley, who is the supervisor for that particular program. Uh, Mr. President?
And I hope you have a certificate for yourself as well, Mr. Zine. While we're waiting that, Mr. Cardenas is going to speak, and Mr. Smith, and Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much. I'm a big supporter of making sure that, uh, people are thwarted from, uh, you know, being involved in this activity. I remember when I used to own a business, nothing made my blood boil more than driving up to my business first thing in the morning to open the door, to welcome all the people that I used to employ, and to also welcome all the customers. And then all of a sudden, there's graffiti on the wall. It would drive me crazy. But as a councilmember, I do, uh, support this reward program. For example, there's a gentleman in Pacoima who reports people quite often, and for some reason, the city paperwork got a little messed up. And they said, "No, we're not going to give you your reward." So, us as councilmembers, including Mr. Zine and the people here, said, "We listened to the issue, and we said, 'No, he deserves these rewards.'" And on top of that, he happens to give every single dollar back to the community for programs. So, this is the kind of effort that we're seeing here, and I want to thank all of you for that as well. But I can't, uh, um, talk about this issue without talking about the other side of it as well. And I'll use somebody as an example, and I hope he doesn't get upset. Uh, there was a guy who went to San Fernando High School. Uh, I was there on campus when he was there. My brother, Ernie Gardenas, used to be his classmate from junior high all the way through high school. And he's now famous. He was quite a knucklehead in high school. Teachers used to get upset at him. He used to get sent to the principal's office, always talking, talking, talking. A big joker. That's George Lopez. So, obviously, he had a talent, and obviously, he was using it, maybe in a way that was annoying, or maybe in a way that was not productive. But at the same time, I think it's also important for the city of Los Angeles to encourage organizations like Clear Channel, "Thank you so much for all the free billboard space," but also include everybody to say, "Guess what? We're cutting arts programs. Kids are bored. Kids don't have positive things to do." And they have a lot of energy, and look at what they're doing sometimes. The graffiti on our walls, that's vandalism, it's against the law, and they should be apprehended. Yet, at the same time, we should look at this holistically. I want to thank you for taking care of this half of the issue very strongly and with every effort that you have. But at the same time, I want to remind us that there are other things that we can do to make sure. The best thing we can do about crime is prevent a crime. And preventing crime has something to do with us taking responsibility and making sure that we provide resources for these kids, especially, maybe some of them are pretty darn good artists. And maybe if we help them jet, put that in the right direction, they won't write on our walls. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
And I wanted to point out something that is very valuable to us. Uh, Mr. Cardenas mentioned the rewards. We've actually had in public safety already in the first three months of this year, I believe 14 rewards given out. That means 14 people were caught tagging somewhere in the city of LA. And the value of what they're doing here, and what Daniel's crews do, for instance, and others, when they go out and get a report from a citizen of graffiti, they go out and take pictures of it, because these people sign these, they have monikers on them. And their monikers are like a signature, and it's admissible in court of law. And so, when Daniel's crews go out, they take the pictures, give them to the Police Department, they record the Madison Square footage painted, all clean and green, crews do that as well. And when LAPD does make a rest and can tie it to the person, we can get restitution from the courts. And we've gotten as much as $25,000 from some of these kids, restoration of cost, uh, from their families and from them, for what they've done, because of the work that they've done with LAPD. And so, thank you for Clear Channel, for bringing this to the public. People are taking advantage of it, and when we go to court, our police officers are now armed with the tools they need to get restitution and also to enhance those penalties on those kids that do that. And not only kids, the adults that are doing it too. So, it's a great program, and to the West Valley Alliance, my citizens love you guys out there. You guys are fabulous, and all of you guys doing this, um, thank you very much. It is working, we're making a, our mark, and thank you for Clear Channel to have taken it public with your billboards.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Englander. Um, and with that, we'll go back to Mr. Zine.
Councilman Greg, who? What, what did he call you, Mr. Smith?
No, he had to lower his chair to do his Councilmember Englander.
And, oh, Councilmember Englander, okay. And just, just one more point. So many people do not realize that the $1,000 reward exists, and that's what this is about, this public education. And this hard economic times, $1,000 just goes a long way. So, we encourage people to report it. And I want to thank all the folks that are involved in this, so the community will know that we're taking a very aggressive effort to eradicate graffiti from the city of the angels. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. And just as a gentle reminder, we know that blight comes in many different forms, including hoarding. And anybody who's ever been to Mr. Zine's office knows we've got a long way to go. Uh, with that, we will go to, uh, Councilmember Alacon for his second presentation, Council, District 7.
Councilmembers, as you can see, I'm joined by a bunch of chefs over here. And, uh, I, too many chefs in the kitchen. Very good, Janice. I am, uh, very pleased to be here to present a certificate to Mission College for their Culinary Arts Institute. This is a very special program, and a lot of people don't know about it. Uh, but this has become a central feature at Mission College. And so, I want to go through my notes and explain a little bit about Mission College, because even though, uh, anybody who goes to Mission College knows how important the culinary arts program is, uh, many people still do not know that we have a top-notch culinary arts program in, right here in the San Fernando Valley. So, I'm, I'm sorry, Dr. Eloise Cantrell from the Culinary Arts Institute at Los Angeles Mission College could not be here. She was one of the founders. Uh, but we are joined by the executive chef, Rudy Garcia, and their 2010 Bistro Top Chef Team. Uh, recently, they won, for the second consecutive year, first-place honors at the Third Annual Bistro Challenge in Reno, Nevada. The Culinary Arts Program has quietly emerged as a national leader in culinary arts education and the food and hospitality industry. The rise of this culinary institute is amazing when you consider that Mission College originally was formed in 1975, and classroom instruction was initially conducted in vacant storefronts and warehouses throughout the northeast San Fernando Valley. In February 1975, Dr. Cantrell was one of those originally, original founding faculty members. And in 1991, Dr. Jack Fujimoto, uh, Mr. Smith, I know knows, uh, Jack, was the president of LA Mission College, and the Culinary Arts Institute at LA Mission College was formed by Dr. Cantrell in a simple home economics kitchen. Um, and, but there is a new Culinary Arts Institute being constructed as we speak. It will be the home, the new home for the Culinary Arts Institute, and it is a $45 million LEAD Platinum Center. This distinct 80,000-square-foot facility will include a bookstore and 77,000 square feet of culinary space with food labs, fine dining rooms, and at least seven distinctive kitchens. Uh, sounds to me like, um, the new president of Mission College is going to have some banquets. Um, the new Culinary Arts Institute offers students and culinary professionals a first-class facility seen at top culinary schools in the country, as well as theoretical, uh, studies in conjunction with hands-on experience in food service operations, catering, and fine dining. Uh, let me tell you a little bit about the executive chef, Rudy Garcia. This guy has really made the program, uh, I think blossom. Uh, so, along with Dr. Cantrell, uh, executive chef Rudy Garcia joined the Culinary Institute in 1991 and helped propel this program to where it is today. Prior to 1991, Chef Rudy had been the executive chef for the Hilton Corporation, you might have heard of that, uh, as well as a chef instructor with ABC Unified School District in Cerritos. Fortunately for the northeast San Fernando Valley, Chef Rudy has never looked back. He grew up in East LA, uh, and in a recent Daily News article, Chef Rudy recognized that both his mother and the Galloping Gourmet were the major figures in his culinary career. He was quoted as saying, "I used to watch Graham Kerr, the Galloping Gourmet, uh, and if it wasn't for him, I wouldn't be where I am today." Uh, I watched him too, but I can't give him the same credit. Uh, but, uh, I can tell you that this is, this is a community program. Not only do the, do the academic programming for the culinary arts, they participate in the community. And most recently, after the devastating Sayer fires, it was not uncommon for Chef Rudy to provide refreshments and pastries for our fire victims during the community meetings as we worked to rebuild the Silmar community. Chef Rudy, Dr. Cantrell, and Los Angeles Mission College serve the northeast valley over and above culinary instruction. And today, Chef Rudy and Dr. Cantrell share with us their latest prize-winning accomplishment, the 2010 Los Angeles Mission College Bistro Team of Top Chefs. So, let me tell you about the top chefs. For the second time in two consecutive years, the 2010 Los Angeles Mission College Bistro Team, coached by executive chef Rudy Garcia, took first-place honors at the Third Annual International Food Service Executive Association Bistro Challenge, a cooking competition in Reno, Nevada. The LA Mission College competed against six teams from across the country, including the University of Missouri, the US Army, the US Navy, Johnson and Wales University, and Morrisville College from Buffalo, New York. Each team was given 90 minutes to construct a menu and prepare a five-course meal consisting of an appetizer, soup and salad, soup and/or salad, entree, and dessert. And an additional challenge came in the form of a mystery basket containing four top-secret ingredients which had to be incorporated into the menu selection. And when you hear these ingredients, you're going to wonder how anybody could even eat what they, what they put together. The secret ingredients that year were peanut butter, cookie dough, not, not, not so bad so far, but then add sour cream and a cat can of Pitbull Energy Drink. Uh, and for those of you that don't know what Pitbull Energy Drink is, it is manufactured in Pacoima, uh, but it's not sold in too many places. You can find it at Roscoe's Chicken and Waffles, that's the only place you can find. I believe they're part owners, I'm not sure, but, but there's some kind of relationship there. But, um, but if you can make, um, something that has Pitbull Energy Drink, sour cream, cookie dough, and peanut butter in it, tastes good, you deserve recognition, that's for sure. As a result of their creativity, cooking skills, and the excellent coaching they receive, the bistro team met the challenge head-on and came away with a first-place trophy. The bistro team is very grateful to their coach, chef, uh, Garcia, and Dr. Eloise Cantrell for their rigorous training and administrative support that allowed them, uh, to become prize-winning top chefs. So, let me, uh, introduce the team members. Bernice Fong is the team captain, where's Bernice? Hi, Bernice. Brian Bedoy. Salvador Gonzalez. Keith Green. Dorian Gutierrez. And of course, uh, team captain, or not team captain, but, uh, coach, inspiration, uh, Rudy Garcia. So, with that, I have certificates for each of these people, but I'd like to ask, uh, Coach, Chef, uh, Rudy, if you could step forward and tell...
Just, just before, we've got two other members, and then we'll hear from the chef, uh, Councilmember Russ, and then Councilmember Cardenas.
Uh, yes, uh, Chef, you, I know that the councilman has asked you to come up and say a few words, but before you get into your remarks, you're going to have to tell us what you ultimately cooked with the peanut butter, the cookie dough, the, the Pitbull, and sour cream. That is driving me crazy.
And hold on one second, we've got one other councilmember. Hold that thought, Mr. Cardenas.
Rudy, it's good to see you, and I want to thank you for, um, giving the tools for people to be able to learn your craft and to be able to go get a great job and to be able to be an artist. Because I know you're an artist, Rudy, I've known you for many, many years. I had the pleasure and honor of meeting you when I represented Silmar. And I want to thank you for being so, so brash and tough with me every time you said, "Well, why can't we have this and why can't we have that?" And I always did what I could to support you, my wife, Norma, and my 12-year-old daughter who wants to be a chef. Alina says hello. Uh, they, they both know you very well as well. But I just wanted to also ask you, when you get a chance to talk, you better explain to us that you do not use preservatives, because you look exactly the way you did 20 years ago when you got to Mission College. So, uh, you're going to have to explain that one. Uh, so, you're always looking great, Rudy, but more importantly, your attitude and your perseverance is just tremendous. And, uh, to have a culinary arts program in a community, public community college is so hard to do, because cut after cut after cut, they always want to get rid of it. And it would be a profound mistake for, for them to get rid of this culinary arts program. My 12-year-old daughter, Alina, you know Rudy, she wants to be a chef, and you've taught her a few things already. But the bottom line is, if she doesn't go to Mission College, I'm out 80 grand. That's what, uh, that's what they cost, and she wants to go to Cordon Blue somewhere. And I say, "No, no, no, you know, go, go to Cordon Rudy." Uh, but anyway, uh, with that note, I want to thank you, Rudy, for your 20 years of service and hopefully many, many, many more years to come. I hear rumors about how, uh, you know, you might be thinking about hanging it up. Please, please, please don't do that. And also, I just want to say, congratulations to Brian, uh, one of your students. Uh, he's related to Lorena in my office, and, and I just want to say, Brian, you're, you're looking great, you've got a great, great teacher, you're in a great program, and we adjourned in your father's memory in the council. If he were here, he'd say, "Well done." Congratulations.
Please, Chef.
Yes, I want to thank, uh, this, thank, uh, City Council this morning for inviting us and honoring us. Uh, it's a great pleasure to be here. Uh, we normally are never out in the public view, we're always behind the kitchen doors, so you, this is a first to bring us outside, so this is nice. Uh, these, I have to tell you, the secret ingredients, we didn't know what the secret ingredients were until that morning, and it was probably a half hour before we actually started. So, at that time, they kicked me out of the floor. They didn't want no coach around the team, so I was on the sidelines, so then it was up to my team to come up and utilize these ingredients, and fortunately, with an IQ, we put these brains together, we had an IQ of about 400, 500. They came up with different recipes, and I know one of the, the recipes they used was using the cookie dough underneath a breast of chicken. And I'm going to let the team captain tell you, because she was on the floor, they kicked me out, and so I was only viewing with binoculars from the side, like a nervous parent in a waiting room to see what you can expect, you know, for a boy or girl. But yes, it was fun, and I, I'll tell you, I got to give these students a lot of credit. Vigorous hours of training on their own time, and when I see students who want to give that type of dedication to being a perfectionist and learning the skill, then I will go out and beyond myself and give those extra hours just to be there with them, because, you know what, it feels good to give back. And I enjoy that, and, uh, especially with high school kids. it feels good to give back, and I enjoy that, and especially with high school kids and juvenile camps, I work with all these type of programs, and I enjoy it. So I don't wanna let you, my team captain just come up, and, and she was not elected captain until that morning too. So she didn't know she was gonna be captain until the elections took place. I'm gonna bring up Bernice.
Thank you, chef. Thank you, I'd like to thank the city council for this great honor, and as far as the competition went, we, we trained very, very rigorously. When we got secret ingredients, we knew our protein was gonna be chicken, and Keith, our saute guy, went into action with the cookie dough. I did the salads, I think that's where the sour cream and cottage cheese went. I know Sal did our, did our appetizers, put the peanut butter in the shrimp and made a cassate. And Brian had the energy drink for the dessert. He macerated fruit in the energy drink and also created like a cream, pastry cream-based dessert. So that's where the Pitbull went. And we all just worked real hard and fast, and it was difficult because we were the second team to, it was the second year, our, our school had already won first place the previous year, so we did not expect, you know, the, the odds were kind of against us in a sense, because it's an honor that would be, it would have been unusual to be honored for the second year in a row. So this is how it went. Dorian is our alternate, he was there with, with all the training, so we had a great team, great coaching, and the administrative support we received from Dr. Cantrell was wonderful. It enabled us to travel to Reno and really participate fully with, in the competition without any, any worries except to do our best, so thank you very much for the recognition.
With that, let me present these certificates to all of these amazing chefs, and, and in closing, let me say that this program is, is a job creator. That's exactly what this is. It's not just about a job, it's about a career. As you can see, these people are very passionate about being chefs. Chef Rudy has provided chefs to the entire country, literally. Some of the major hotels in the country and across, you know, across this nation have chefs that emerged out of Mission College. It is continuing with a new building that is gonna provide even more jobs and more, there are many, many talented people who have emerged out of this institution. We wanna thank Rudy for his inspiration and for his talent and for the, the giving spirit which, which it comes from. So with that, I'll present these certificates. This is a great trophy, but it doesn't stand anywhere near what it feels like to become a full-time employed chef in a, in a major hotel or other top-notch chef position. So thank you again, Chef Rudy, and the team.
Thank you, congratulations again, and that will take us back to the regular part of the meeting, and we had a request to take one of the items out of order when Assembly Member Fuhrer is here, he's not yet here, so let's go to our general public comment. And our first speaker is Don Ward. He'll be followed by Candido Maras. Just hold on one second, and we'll get you there.
Good morning, council. Thanks for hearing me. I, I came to address the council and to point out that we've had a wonderful process happening in this, in the community of Northridge in CD-12 that involves, I'm a member of the Northridge West Neighborhood Council, and our councilman, Smith, created a process that allowed our council, as well as Porter Ranch Neighborhood Council, to engage the LA DOT on some, on some issues that we've had with a street in our community, one that involves a lot of problems with speeding and crashes over the years. Eight people have died on that street in a 10-year period, and so in order to solve that issue, the LA DOT came in and restriped the street, and, I don't know, there goes my design, but anyways, what I wanted to point out is, is that through this process, engagement with the community has happened with the LA DOT, and we really appreciate that. What we're asking for is more engagement. We've only been given one option as far as a redesign to that street, because there was a lot of people that are not satisfied with it, and what we're asking for is more engagement with the LA DOT. We're gonna be spending $40,000 to go back and redesign a street. We should take that very seriously, that's, you know, especially with our budget problems happening, and we just ask for more options from the LA DOT instead of just coming back with one option. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ward, appreciate it. Candido Maras, our next speaker.
Good morning, Mr. President. We have three or four cards. We're here as a group, so I hope that all three of us can speak at this time. Welcome back to the San Fernando Valley. We've missed you, it's been a while since you've been here, but we are here to honor a great man, and he doesn't, he doesn't know this is taking place, but we've had the privilege and honor of having Greg Smith as our councilman, and behind me, Mr. Smith, are your friends, your constituents, people that you have worked with and people that you have helped, and you have just been an absolute wonderful human being to us, and for me and my wife personally, we can't thank you enough for never judging us and for always being there to support us, and so we're here to honor you, and I'd like to give some of our time to a few of our speakers, Mr. Bob Lombardo, that I know you've worked with before, Mr. Lombardo, Ms. Lombardo?
Councilman Greg Smith, we go back a long ways. We're here today mainly to honor your eight years on the city council, but we know that your public life and your public service goes back many, many years before that. We worked with you on committees with your predecessor. We've been privileged to work with you in our community, and today, I'm here as a representative of the Knights of Columbus, the Van Nuys Council. I, I know that the Van Nuys Council is domiciled, not in your district, but our council has a very extensive geographic area in the valley. We extend all the way from Chatsworth into the borderline of North Hollywood, and many of our members are residents of your district, and as a matter of fact, we also incorporate our Rancho San Antonio, also known as Boystown of the West, which is in your district. So it is very fitting that the Knights of Columbus, Van Nuys Council, honor you today upon your retirement from the council, and these last eight years have been exemplary. Your office, your staff, has always been very responsive to our members and wants and needs that they had in their community, and we applaud you for that and want to acknowledge it and recognize you for that. So thank you very, very much for all your service.
Mr. President, we do have three cards. Before we present the award, I'd like to, one of the business owners in the 12th district, Vito from Two Guys from Italy, do you like to say something?
Yes, my name is Vito Sasson with Two Guys from Italy Restaurants, and I've been 40 years my location in Granada Hills, and I just can't thank you enough. I'm really sorry to see you go, and the only thing that I would like to say is, thank you so much for everything you've done for us, and it's, it's been a really, really great, fantastic pleasure for me to have you as our councilman, and my last words were that Mr. Candido Maras said that you and your family are invited on his account anytime at the restaurant, and I hope you do that.
Hey, Vito, most of us already do that.
Mr. President, councilmembers, thank you for giving us this time. At this time, I'd like to have the Grand Night Brother Tom O'Malley do the presentation.
Councilman Smith, on behalf of Van Nuys Knights of Columbus, we would like to present you with this plaque for your many years of service, appreciation of your time, and especially your last eight years of dedication.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Not many people get to hear their, their obituary, but I think the Knights of Columbus, I first met a lot of these folks, what, 20 years ago probably, and Candido said, "We got some great projects, you gotta help us, it's not in Hal Burton's district, but can you help us?" And I said, "Of course we will, because Hal believes as I do that these organizations do so much for the community, it's not just one community, the entire valley, the entire, all of us that live here in the San Fernando Valley have benefited by the great work of the Knights of Columbus and so many other organizations as well." So I said, "It was my pleasure to participate with them for many years, even though it wasn't in my district, I knew the value to the community, which was a large, large valley community." So God bless you, and thank you, and Candido, all you guys. And I've been a customer, you said 40 years, I've lived there 38, so I've been going there off and off for 38 years too, so now I can charge it to Candido instead. I didn't know that, I'm glad to know, and Bob, we met, what, 50, 30 years ago too, also, so these are a lot of old-time friends, and it's, it's a pleasure to be with you, and thank you for honoring me today. God bless you.
Congratulations, Mr. Smith, and thank you for the community's support. Thank you. Don Ward. Don Ward?
I already spoke.
You already spoke? Okay, thank you. Beverly Miller? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is, again, is Beverly Miller, and I'm here in support of the Marie Hare Square Project. Marie Hare was an icon in our community, and we would like to commemorate her years of service of building our community in Pacoima. We're here to support the initiative to name the corner of Van Nuys and Glen Oaks, the Marie Hare Square. Not only will this, will this serve as a memorandum of her diligent work to build a safe community for our kids and for those who reside in the community, but will also serve as a reminder to our youth and those coming behind that we need to step up to the, to the plate in our community to help build a community that we can all be proud to be called Pacoimians. We would like to thank Councilman Cardenas and Councilman Alacon for that motion to, to make the Van Nuys and Glen Oaks corner that square to be called the Marie Hare Square. Thank you very much.
Thank you, that is item number eight on our agenda. Thank you for those comments. Sharon Brewer? Sharon Brewer, followed by Glenn Bailey.
Sharon Brewer, public comment, Sunday, April 3rd, 2011 Persian New Year Celebration at Lake Balboa, a public city park. Facts, event, event is fencing off part of Lake Balboa, including Universal Playground, being used by the general public. Event admission is $15, free children under 36 inches tall. Admission fee goes to promoter. Event charging $5 per vehicle for parking. Parking fee goes to promoter. No parking signs have been posted on both sides of Balboa Boulevard for Sunday, April 3rd, south of the Orange Line to the LA River. Question, CD-6 and CD-12, did you authorize these signs? Usually, there's a council motion. Because these signs are being posted, it means the public on Sunday are going to have to, going to Lake Balboa, not the event, will have to pay $5 to event promoter to go to a public city park where parking is free. Recreation and park meetings regarding the April 3rd event has been done without the public's knowledge, including notifying the Encino Neighborhood Council, which should be mandatory, just like developers have to give land use issues to go to the neighborhood councils. No notice on the city events calendar about the event, no notice in local papers in English about the impact of the event to the public's use of Lake Balboa. Recreation and parks, valley region must be required to notify neighborhood councils, Encino Neighborhood Council and Lake Balboa, whose boundaries include the public basin, about any special events being planned at the beginning, and the NC should be able to sit in on any planning meetings regarding large events, Persian New Year, World Fest, Israeli Festival. The event promoter, promoter also needs to go to the NCs with a plan regarding their events. Once again, this event, it is a good event for the Persian community, but the public that uses Lake Balboa are not being told about this event so that they can rearrange their schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Glenn Bailey? Is Glenn Bailey here? No Glenn Bailey? There's a card for him. Rick Knight and Gill. Rick Knight and Gill? Good morning, Rick Knight and Gill.
Good morning, city council. After I saw the, about the college, about the, the cooking, well, they're closing the college over there at Valley Occupation Center, they're closing it down for the auto shop and so forth, you know, over in that. That is a dirty, rotten shame, because where else is somebody, if you don't have a college education and so forth, that you could turn around and learn a trade? To turn around and make a living, a decent living, and so forth? As you know, I was electrician, but I turned around and I learned how to do body work and, and stuff like that, and when, and when that copper strike hit in the 70s, you couldn't get a job, the same as right now. These people think that I'm, I'm bad on, because the union come up and says I'm saying bad things about the union, the electrical union. But I learned a trade, and I turned around and had to go get a different job, and I got a job at, at a, at a body shop, Bruno's Corvette, and I learned, I knew how to do glasswork, and I learned a living for a year, because I had to get work. And they're closing this college, because a friend of mine is a teacher, and he's excellent, and he is down to 24 hours a week. Now how could you do anything for 24 hours a week? He's there for the benefits, because he had a company and he couldn't survive, and they're gonna lay him off, he's gonna have to quit or whatever. And this is where you're training people to make a living. And they said, "No, I'm sorry." Even the high schools, if you don't, they only want computers, they don't even have auto shop. That's the only reason I wanted to finish high school, because I knew what I wanted to do. I wanted to be in construction, I wanted to work on cars. I'm a car buff. You know, I got 14 cars, that's crazy, but they're classics and I make money on them. I can sell them, I make a lot of money, but I don't. That's why I bought a house with a 3,000 square foot garage, so I can keep my cars. But this is what I did as a layman, and people can do this, but not with, without education to do it. And the schools are cheating these people. Thank you.
Don Schultz. Mr. Don Schultz. Mr. Schultz? No, Mr. Schultz.
Is that say Rocha? My name is Susan Rocha, is that who you called? No church bells or amplified sound systems. I'm tired of hearing an amplified sound system six times a day, every day, starting at 7:55 in the morning. The rule issue is about the code. The law needs to change. It's discrimination, it's chapter 11, article five, uh, chapter, chapter 11, article 5, section 115.02B. It exempts certain types of sound for churches, but yet not other religious organizations like temples, mosques, mosque, or individuals. So it is discrimination in the law. I have asked repeatedly for someone to look at the law, and the city attorney refuses to, as I've tried that route too, and I've tried several city council members and no, and my councilmember, Ed Reyes, and he has refused to, and no one else wants to take a look at the law. But it's the law that needs a change, it's an intrusion into my home six times a day, every day, but it also is a discrimination in the law, so I'm asking for the law to change. I don't think it's so complicated or so difficult to understand. I feel like it's so simple that I don't get it, that no one else seems to get it, that this is not okay for me to have to hear this six times a day, all the time, out of four bullhorns on top of Divine Savior Catholic Church. And I also didn't think that was fair, Father Marco took me to court for restraining- And I also didn't think that was fair, Father Marco took me to court for a restraining order because I hold a sign, "No church bells." Oh, but heaven is an expensive Catholic attorney, and there are 200 Catholic members lost.
Thank you.
You still have First Amendment.
Thank you. Ma'am, your time is up, thank you. Mr. Coretz, we are going to suspend public comment and go to Mr. Coretz on item number nine. Mr. Cardenas?
If I could announce or ask that item 12 go forthwith, it was already voted on.
Item 12 forthwith.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. So, Mr. Coretz, are you ready?
Yes.
All right, we're going to proceed with the number nine, and we'll come back to public comment, because we have an Assembly member here.
Yes, I'm grateful that we have Assembly Member Mike Fuer here, who we continue to work closely with.[649.16][649.16](APPLAUSE).
Former distinguished member of the Los Angeles City Council.
Here on his, his long gun bill, and we, we often hear that when there are terrible shootings, the shooter at times is not only using handguns, but also may use a long gun, and it's a bill that doesn't restrict the right of gun owners in any way to own guns, but ensures that our existing registration and background checks are consistent with the effort to keep these guns out of the hands of criminals by including long guns in those background checks. So, we look forward to continuing partnership on gun violence issues with Mr. Fuer, and if we can give him some time to speak about his legislation, that would be greatly appreciated.
Mr. Fuer, take the hot seat.
I've never been here before, actually, this is kind of a cool place to be.
Welcome, welcome to your valley.
Yes, indeed. Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the council. I'll be very concise. We all are striving to find every way we can to curtail gun violence. We have a real anomaly in state law at the moment. If you buy a handgun, the state retains a record of your purchase. There are obvious reasons for doing so that I'll discuss in a second. But if you buy a long gun, a shotgun, or some other long gun, the state purposely, under law, has to destroy that record within five days. We retain the handgun records, we purposely destroy the long gun records.
So, you're referring to rifles or shotguns?
Correct, well, any long gun, any long gun.
So, what's a long gun?
Longer than a handgun.[747.73][747.73](LAUGHING). Everyone tries to have a little shtick in this, in this council, it's always been true. So, but, but, but very, but very seriously, yes, but very seriously for a second, we will, we all need to be conscious of the fact that a third of the crime guns in California are long guns. No retention of those records. So, what this will do is provide law enforcement with an important tool to engage in the tracing of illegal weapons trafficking. It lets law enforcement officials who are heading to the scene of, say, a domestic violence dispute, know if there's a long gun in the house, and it does something else, we have many prohibited purchasers, felons, people who are mentally disabled, who have guns, they've been discovered with guns. We should know if they have them in the first instance, and it gives law enforcement a much safer way to get those guns out of the wrong hands. So, law, very straightforward, I'm pleased to report this council has supported earlier versions of this effort. It's a tough effort in Sacramento, there's no question, but it's a very important one, supported by law enforcement, and LAPD is here to provide its insight into why this bill is important from its perspective, as it tries as hard as we all want to to curtail gun violence. And with that, I would urge your support for AB 809 in the state legislature.
We have representatives in LAPD, if you want to take the center seat next to the Assembly member? And then we have some questions, Mr. Cardenas?
Welcome, Assembly Member Fuer.
Hi, nice to see you.
I have a couple, a couple of questions, if you could let us know how far this particular bill number has made it through the process, and then where it's at currently, what the next steps are, and then in addition, I noticed that it says that it, you're being very generous with your allowing preparation for this to be implemented, it would be sometime in 2013 that it would actually go into effect, should this law be passed and signed this year, for example, correct?
Right.
In addition to that, what, what's been the feedback from the governor's office, and also from the state attorney general?
Hey, very good. So, let me try to answer each of those questions. The bill is, in its earliest stages, and of course, your colleague, Mr. Cardenas, is well familiar with the state legislative process, so the bill is about to be heard in the Assembly Public Safety Committee, as it makes its way through the Assembly, and then it'll head over to the Senate. Last year, it was passed by the Assembly, but it was, and it went through the Public Safety Committee of the Senate, it did not have adequate votes on the Senate floor, in large measure because it came up at a very last minute moment, if you recall, the end of last year's session, that there were some complicated matters unrelated to this bill that at the last second didn't get heard, and so it was caught up in all of that last year. So, it's important to give it impetus now, as it makes its way through the Assembly, and then on its way to the Senate. The governor has not opined on the bill, and we've been all budget all the time, as you would know as the former chair of the Budget Committee, and the governor, as a legislative matter, has been very, very focused on the budget, and doesn't, hasn't weighed in generally on legislative efforts. I'm optimistic, however, because the bill enjoys the support of police chiefs around the state of California. Last year, law enforcement throughout the state, very supportive, there were some concerns expressed by representatives from rural communities, that's always the case on gun issues, there's sort of an urban rural dichotomy there, and that's, so that's what I wanted to share.
And the new state attorney general?
Oh, oh, and I've actually sat down with the attorney general, and I'm optimistic that her office will emerge with a support position, there is no formal position yet.
And then prosecutorial authorities around the state DA's, people at that level?
Yeah, not, formally, yes, this year, we're at an earlier stage, I'm, again, I'm, I assume similar support will emerge as the bill makes its way through the process this year, as it has in the past.
In the last version of the bill, of those official authorities, any of them, were any of them officially opposed to it last time?
The, no, there were some rural sheriffs who were opposed to the bill last year, and I can get to your office, the list of support and opposed from last year, so you have a comprehensive list of both.
I appreciate it, I just wanted to get a picture of, of how thorough it sounds, all I'm trying to say, what I'm getting from you is, it's a very thorough bill so far in last year's version, it sounds like you've actually improved it in this year's version. I just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything quirky going on with, with somebody who normally would weigh in positively on it.
Oh, no, not at all.
But they haven't, and, and I'm very familiar with the rural sheriff's concerns, not that they're, they're, they're not worth noting, but it's, it's, it's a different environment over there on this specific issue, and I just want to ask you the last question is, have you been dialoguing with, with those sheriffs?
Absolutely, in fact, I just met with the Sheriff's Association leadership, maybe 10 days ago, and we discussed, for what it's worth, the following points. The, the, you could imagine logical arguments in response to this bill like this, "It's gonna cost me too much money if I'm gonna buy a rifle." Well, the bill adds no cost. It's gonna take too long to process. The bill simply requires an additional line on the form that is already being completed by people who purchase long guns, but those records are simply destroyed thereafter. The concern is also expressed, I think, by some in those counties from which the rural sheriffs represent, that somehow this is going to invade the privacy of lawful gun owners, and there's nothing in the bill that does that at all. But those are the arguments that we discussed recently when I met with the sheriffs, had those same discussions last year, and I think at the bottom, I think it's fair to say that the split, the urban rural split will continue, in part because the culture in some of these counties is different from those in these, in the cities we represent, and also, in a place like Los Angeles, the bill has special urgency that may be perceived to be less pronounced in some of the rural counties.
Well, I want to thank you for your thoroughness, thank you, Mr. President, for your generosity of time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alacon and Mr. Labonge.
Mr. Fuer, I want to commend you for taking on this sort of complicated issue, it seems like a simple issue, but it's, it's really not, and, and I'm glad that you are carrying this bill, because I know how intensely you delve into the details of an issue and represent it well. Folks, this is about saving lives. At the end of the day, notwithstanding the complications of the measure, the purpose is to stop people from shooting people in the first place, and, and by virtue of the fact that many crimes cannot be solved because we cannot track the weapon to a purchase, this bill would enhance our ability to do just that. So, it will occur after the fact, but because it will occur if, if this bill passes, people would be less inclined to do it in the first place. And so, it has a preventative measure, but it also has a, the, it would have a positive impact on the closure rate for many crimes that have heretofore been unsolved. So, this is a measure that is needed, we can't do enough. Having responded to major shootings in the San Fernando Valley, the bank robbery, the childcare center in Granada Hills, and Mr. Smith and Zine are very well aware of those incidents, Mr. Fuer, you were on the council with us when the bank robbery occurred.
You bet.
And, and we, we can testify to the difficulties of keeping track of these kinds of weapons, so I want to applaud you, you have my support, and, and hopefully, the state will, will respond, the state legislature will respond positively, for the governor, and the governor will sign. Thank you very much for bringing this measure to us.
Thank you, Councilman, and also thank you for always being so supportive of these measures when we serve together, and also in the state legislature.
Mr. Labonge.
Mr. Fuer, thank you for many, 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 many things you do. You were a great councilman, you left this, and you continue to help this city and this state. When Mr. Cardenas was speaking earlier, I reflected, years ago, working for John Farrell, believe it or not, you can carry sheaf knives, all the way down to your knee, and this is when the 4th District went through the Wilshire Corner, MacArthur Park, parts of Hollywood. It took two years, because when he talked about the rural counties in the northern part of the state, Mr. Cardenas, I reflected that it took two years for the rural counties to approve it, because farmers do carry sheaf knives, and they work in that way in that day, but walking down Alvarado, or walking down Hollywood Boulevard, and if you're bumbling to each other, it didn't belong, but anything that we could do to take away a temptation, or to correct something, will give someone another day, that we don't know, that we don't see, because so much of the violence is spontaneous, and to try to correct that is what all our efforts should be. So, I wanted to stand and salute you, as well as the captain and the fine sergeant of the LAPD on your flank.
Thank you, Councilman, thank you very much.
Mr. Coretz.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you again for doing this, and to acknowledge the difficulty, because I was in the legislature, and we've worked on gun violence issues together for probably 20 years, and I had this on my list of potential legislative agenda for that entire six years, and I never took it on, because even I determined that that was impossible. Now, we've had a few years of things moving in the right direction in California, but I just want to underscore the difficulty of getting a complicated bill like this, and one that has institutionalized, almost automatic rural opposition through, so I commend you for taking this on, for bringing it as far as it's gone, and hopefully, having a chance to, to do the nearly impossible.
Thank you.
I also want to take this unrelated opportunity to announce my candidacy for mayor, and the, the support of my colleagues, Jan Perry and Eric Garcetti, along with, along with Wendy Gruehl and supervisors, Edgar Aslowski.[1386.21][1386.21](LAUGHING).
From our LAPD representatives, any comments before we take public comment on this?
Yes, once again, I'm Captain Ringo Romero, the Assistant Command Officer, Gang of Recotics Division, and certainly, the, the LAPD Chief Police, Charlie Beck, is very supportive of any and all legislation that provides for public safety, and it is certainly our position that that is precisely what the Assembly Bill 809 entails. You know, we do deal with quite a bit of violence in the community, and, and some of that violence can really be prevented, and briefly, we do deal with the, the issue of those prohibited possessors out in our community, and this bill in particular would really safeguard our police officers in the community, because that knowledge that someone is armed with long guns is very significant to us, that's probably one of the most dangerous weapons that a police officer can face, as well as a community member.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have two public comments, our first one, Rick Knightengale, and then we will go downtown for Arnold Sachs, and then we'll take the vote.
Yeah, Rick Knightengale. You know, I know having weapons, and the bad people get them, but I don't care what you do, the bad people are gonna get them. It's just the way it is. And so, the people that register them, I have guns, yes, they're registered and so forth, but every, every time that you do this, the good guy loses, and the bad guy, it don't matter, because they ain't gonna obey the law anyway. Okay, handguns, hey, put them in your pants and you can walk down. A long gun, you ain't gonna put it down your pants and carry it and go down the street. I mean, you're trampling on our rights like you flat wouldn't believe. Now, you turn around, and Wednesday, the other gun deals kind of come along. I don't know why, why somebody wants to carry a gun that's not loaded, that's crazy, because if you see a gun, you think it's loaded. I agree with that, but they're still coming along and gonna take that right away from you. I mean, I have a, our family has an apartment building, it's in a bad area, I go over there and I collect money. I've gotten in, I'm, I'm 67 years old, when I was 63, I got in a fight over there. And what are you supposed to do, give it to them? I don't think so. I was growing up, I ain't gonna give nothing to nobody if they don't deserve it. And I mean, you won't give us gun permits, we're law-abiding citizens, I got a clean record, never been arrested, but you're gonna give me a gun permit? No way. The only way I'm gonna get it is if I turn around and it's coming along, we're thinking about moving out of the city, oh, it's gonna, it's so, it stinks. I got the, the perfect house I ever wanted to live in, but the city stinks. I don't like what's going on, it's like a charity group going down. And this is what it's all about with the guns. You're taking our rights away, the law-abiding citizen can't protect himself, because it's against the law. But everybody that has any high mucky muck, you can get a permit and, and protect yourself. So, who is supposed to protect us? I'd like to know. Thank you.
Let's go downtown to Arnold Sachs for public comment on this matter.
Mr. Knightengale, you can call your councilman, he'll come and protect you. What's interesting about this item on your, on your agenda is that the resolution states that the requirements are for firearm transactions that are not handguns, and Mr. Fuer, I really appreciate your language, because you were talking about long guns, and it's a slight variation, but it's definitely a difference. I'd like to thank you also for coming down to the city of LA and discussing, supporting the governor's budget plan for the consideration for the vote in June, or wait, you didn't do that. But then I'd also like to point out that on March 26th, Radio Shack offers Bang Up Satellite TV Promotion. Radio Shack in Montana is offering free, free shotguns if you sign up for DirecTV or Dish Network. You might want to check into that and make it part of your, amend your resolution. Thank you.
All right, that matter is now before us for a vote, colleagues. Please open the roll, close the roll, table the vote.
Ten eyes.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, appreciate it very much.
Thank you. We will now return to public comment. Thank you, Mr. Fuer. All right, let's go, stay downtown, Walter Bechtel, public comment. Forthwith on that previous item, forthwith. Walter Bechtel.
Fortwith, that's, that's the place everybody can go to get protected from, but, yeah, I was gonna say something about the last item, but that's all right, it don't matter. I wanted to say something about cigarette smoking in the city of LA here, you've got a lot of laws and ordinance, but they don't seem to be enforced about it. Also, that's why I have a call today, because these people aren't smoking where they're supposed to be smoking, and, and they're finding now some new brand of cigarette, I don't know what it is that they're smoking, but it, it really is raspy, it's the worst brand that they can find, and they're walking down the sidewalks with the cigarette pointing out on the side to see who they can accidentally burn. I see what's gonna happen, they're gonna accidentally burn somebody's baby or something, and then the guy's gonna get the snot knocked out of him, and then the LAPD is gonna arrest the guy for beating up the guy with a cigarette. There's something wrong here, you need to, you need to pass some ordinance, why don't you pass an ordinance about what people are doing with the cigarettes, and why don't you get some kind of a, I don't know, what is wrong with a quota? Why can't the LAPD have a quota? Isn't a quota the only way of not discriminating? If you have a quota of tickets that they should pass out at the train station or other places, then you can't, they, it's not left up to the quote discretion, unquote, of the officer who, who is going to decide if he's gonna give somebody a ticket or not. I told, I talked to an officer, I said, "This lady is here, she's eating on the train," or, or doing something else, and they don't want to give a ticket if, anymore, if you ask. don't want to give a ticket anymore if you ask them to give a ticket. They just, it's up to their discretion now, and mostly the discretion is they're not going to give anybody a ticket at all. So, if you just have a quota system, I think that will circumvent this.
Ben Fortson, Ben Fortson, in the San Fernando Valley, excuse me, downtown. Ben Fortson.
I just heard one of the city council members, he stressed, and he was pretty upset about graffiti. Zero tolerance for graffiti. When is there going to be a zero tolerance for racially motivated attacks against black people by the majority? Zero tolerance for racially motivated attacks on black people by the majority. This is my fourth time here. One of the city, one of the fundamental functions of the city council is to uphold, protect, and enforce the laws of the citizens. Antonio Veragosta said he wouldn't have, he wouldn't put up and tolerate racially motivated attacks. We had a hate crime committed against me and my fiancee. They're protecting the suspect, covering up for him down here at the Southwest Division, Martin Luther King Boulevard. Martin Luther King would be rolling over in his grave if he knew what was going on. By not enforcing our rights and allowing people to commit racially motivated attacks against black people is a covert way of allowing black people to be victimized and targeted like we have been in this country for centuries. Why is it so hard for them to believe? I don't understand. We are in fear for our lives. We're not allowed to defend ourselves in this country, black people, against racially motivated attacks than we never have been. If we can defend ourselves, they're going to say, oh, you can't take the law into your own hands. Call the police. But when you call the police, what do they do? They defend the suspects and cover up for them. And how come I never see any groups of African-American black kids being toured around this place since I've been coming? I never see them. And we need more black LAPD officers.
Arnold Sacks, our next speaker at City Hall. Arnold Sacks.
Thank you. Good morning, or maybe good afternoon, Arnold Sacks. It's very interesting. On Wednesday, there was a story in the LA Times, Steve Lopez does a column on Councilman Bill Rosendahl's mind regarding the AEG football stadium. In the same newspaper, a column by Michael Hitzlack states that, "Good deal for farmers or customers." It seems that Farmers Insurance has overcharged more than 13 million customers, fees that could total from $9 billion, excuse me, fees that totaled $9 billion from 1999 through the end of last year. They were in a lawsuit that was settled in October. And I believe, if memory serves me correctly, isn't October the time of the year that Farmers Insurance signed a stadium agreement with AEG for $100 million? And now we know where they're getting $100 million from. So, we know that the council is open and transparent. We've got two writers from LA Times writing bookend stories regarding the stadium and funding, and neither one of them knows what the hell the other one's writing about. That leaves a real problem for the public to get information. And if you expect to get it from the council, that's oh for three.
Eleanor Harrison, down at City Hall.
Good morning. As you know, on February 11th of 2011, my fiancee and I were the victims of a racially motivated hate crime by Ryan McKenzie, who has close ties to the LAPD Southwest Division. All we're asking is for someone, anyone, to take the time to sit down with us and review the video and audio CD that we have that shows the VIP treatment of Ryan McKenzie from the LAPD, crucial facts being ignored and omitted from reports. And that's just to name a few of the misconduct and the mishandling of our case. Now, if the table were turned, justice would be swift with consequences if a black person violated the rights or committed a hate crime against a white homosexual Muslim or Jewish couple. Why are we not granted equal protection under the law? Why is it so hard to believe a racially motivated hate crime was committed against us? One reason is because it's been happening for centuries. Well, we're here to stand up and make a change. All we're getting is lip service and the runaround from District 8, District 10, even Whitley Thomas office. No one wants to help or hear us. Why? It starts with you, city council members. You are violating our rights for not enforcing the law that you swore to protect the citizens. I will keep coming back until justice is served. We will not stop coming here. The next step is to contact California Attorney General Kamala Harris. Thank you.
Glenn Bailey, here in the Valley. Mr. Bailey, we're previously called.
I heard, thank you very much. I was down the hall in the mayor's office. Thank you for the second chance. I'm Glenn Bailey, friends of the Sepulveda Basin. I wanted to comment regarding the Persian New Year event that's being held at Lake Balboa this weekend on a couple of issues that are of concern to the community. First of all, the Army Corps of Engineers Environmental Assessment Comment Deadline was March 22nd. However, the permit, which I have a copy of, issued by City Wreck and Parks, was dated March 8th, two weeks before the comment deadline on the environmental review document. Regarding fees and lost monies to the city, based on last year's 20,000 attendees, paying $15 a person, including children above 36 inches, equals $300,000 going to the event organizer, which incidentally is a profit corporation. It's not a nonprofit organization. For that, the Department of Recreation and Parks is charging $2,700 for use of the facility for setup if over five days. The booth income to the promoter is estimated $80,000 to $100,000. The city is getting, the city is getting $5,000. So, bottom line is the city is getting $10,200. The private company running this event is getting $380,000 to $400,000. What's wrong with that picture? If the Wreck and Parks was charging the full fees it was supposed to be charging based on the rate and schedule fees, based on attendance and based on income boosts, the city would be getting $26,500 instead of the $10,200 that is designated in this permit. Also, the parking is shown in the permit to be free, but in, on the event organizer's website, they're charging $5. That's going to be a significant impact to CD 6 and CD 12, where all the people who don't want to pay the $5 will be parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Koretsch, you pressed your button. Okay. That concludes public comment for today. Can you please take Mr. Koretsch off the queue? He's up in the queue. All right, Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, unless there are any requests to take items out of order, that brings us to item number six, called Special for Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl, item number six. We have cards from the public.
Thank you, Mr. President. Folks, I need your attention for this. I know we want to get out of here, but this is something that needs to be discussed. I'd like staff to come up while I'm starting off on this presentation here from the DOT.
Mr. Rosendahl, public hearing was held. There are cards if you wish to open it if we do. If not, we do not need to have public comment.
No, no, they're waiting. They have a right, and so we're going to let them speak. But come on up, staff, real quick, so I can just make some opening remarks. This is a two-part report that details out the proposed use of pedestrian set-aside money available through Measure R Local Return and Bicycle Set-Aside. What you see in this report is related to the bicycle set-aside, which we've already done in a five-year implementation plan that we approved. It's a great plan, and we've got a plan in place. What I'd like to focus on today is the recommendations on how we can involve ourselves with pedestrian set-aside money, roughly $2.6 million. In many ways, we're in the same place with pedestrians where we were with bicycling 15 years ago. We want to bring it up, and we want to make the pedestrian plan really happen. So, we're going to go forward with that. In our discussions in the Transportation Committee, we emphasize the importance of planning and focusing on a data-driven process. Now is the time to change the course. In so doing, we'll better serve our communities, care for children of the most need, and provide more data-driven in our decisions, leveraging more grant funding, and reintroduce a strategic plan element to the city. Frankly, it's a no-brainer. That's why so many advocacy groups have written letters of support, the Green LA Coalition, Sustainable Streets, the Safe Routes to School National Partnership, and the Bicycle Coalition. I'd like staff to give us a quick report so everybody can understand what we're talking about. I have a few quick questions, and I want the public to react to what they hear and interact with us as well. Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Ken Huesting with LADOT. Just real briefly, what we have before council is more detailed information regarding the specific expenditures that we're planning for the Measure R Local Return Bicycle and Pedestrian Program funds. Specifically, what we're looking to do with the bicycle program funds are implement what is consistent with the recently adopted bicycle plan, in so much as doing bicycle lanes, bicycle-friendly streets, bicycle parking racks, and share-o pavement markings. And as far as the pedestrian program, we are looking, as the council member mentioned, to go forward with a Safe Routes to Schools study, something that'll be a little bit more objective and help the city be more strategic in the way that it plans and implements projects regarding to the Safe Routes funds across the entire city. Also, we're looking at pedestrian devices to be implemented across the city where we believe there's the highest benefit cost ratio, and that's based on accident data. And finally, is to enhance the transit safety over at several transit stops across the city, and this could be done in each council district. So, that's real briefly what we're looking to do today, and I'll defer to any of my colleagues if they want to add some comments.
And then Mr. Alakon has a friendly amendment that he'd like to bring if we could let him do it, and then the public.
Mr. Alakon, then Mr. Labonge, and then we have public comment. So, Mr. Alakon.
Councilmembers, as you know, the determination of where traffic signals and the like should be placed is largely based on accident history. And yet, there are many other factors that should be considered, at least I believe so. And they have to do with concentration of pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic, and young people. And I think, as much as I've supported this all along, I think we could improve it by looking at what other things we should consider when we're considering traffic mitigations. So, I have an amendment that we can't find right now, but essentially, what I'd like to do is a friendly amendment to add, to ask the CLA to work with DOT and a group of city departments to establish a working group to find other measure, other things that should be considered when we are assessing pedestrian and bicycle safety. And I believe that that report, having come back, will give us a better procedure for determining where the signalization and other kinds of mitigation should be placed.
I agree with that, and I'll second that.
Thank you.
Friendly amending motion. Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much. I was not in that committee meeting that day. On this issue, there's the three E's of traffic, right? Is that correct? Is that one of your philosophies too, the three E's? Engineering, education, and enforcement?
Yeah. In fact, the available state and federal funding wants projects to go beyond the three E's. The three E's are engineering, education, and enforcement. We want to add enhancement and also encouragement of.
That's a good value to have every day. But the three E's, as an engineer, for us to be successful in a very large city, we have to be very focused. And I want to very much support this. But also, what Mr. Alakon said too, what helps is where are the concentrations? And as a former MTA board member, what I always pledged is we look at transportation as a hub and spoke and look for ways to connect areas because you, this is a little amount of money for a large area. So, I think it's very important that we look at these components and also, especially in the valley, which was planned with very wide streets. And very wide streets means often speed, and these impacts are so important. So, I just want you to look at that, and I would like to ask you to visit my office. And also, look at ways that we connect other areas of the city together, whether it's downtown with USC, whether it's Borough Heights in downtown, how the spoke works and how you envision it. Because there's a great spirited movement, and more people are riding cycles. My concern is I've seen a number of people ride on the opposite way in traffic forward. Do you, have you seen or heard that, any of you?
Absolutely.
Yes.
And it concerns me because I don't want anyone to ever get hurt in Los Angeles, but the potential for accidents does happen. And additionally, the share of the road, which is so important, and the educational component, which is so important. Yesterday, with Janice Hahn in the South Bay, we were with Wyland, the great muralist, the artist, to talk about the oceans. And all the weather people were there. Kai Goldberg, Josh Rubenstein, Jackie Johnson, all of the team that were there from Channel 2. And they are now spokesmen for the ocean as weather people. We have to find if we can get the traffic people, not only to say the 405 is backed up at Sepulveda and Sepulveda Pass, start talking about alternative transit. I know there's rides here Tuesday, something to help promote this effort here because we can be very successful. There's a tremendous amount of people who are riding, but we have to make sure we do, and pedestrians. But the one thing I will say as someone who was hit by a car in a crosswalk where the first car is a child, stopped, the second car didn't, I tell everybody, is get eye contact. Get eye contact to make sure the driver stops, no matter what signs we have there, no matter what lights there are, eye contact is so important, so.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Ms. Hahn? I know we're running out of time because some colleagues have to leave.
Thank you. I just wanted to, I just wanted to quickly, it's the first time I've spoken today, that I know you're doing a study to look at where this money could go. I just want to make sure that you don't forget the community of Watts. There is a community grassroots, potential bike route that has been planned. Tim Watkins with the WLCIC met with me last week, showed me this project, and it's very important for this community to also be included in a potential bicycle path project. We're thinking about maybe connecting it to the new Jordan Downs redevelopment project. This is a part of safe passage, by the way, for kids going to and from school, which is a big problem in this community. And they want to have this bike path be part of that larger project of safe passage. So, just don't forget Watts. I can give you all the information you need, but hopefully, when you're doing a study, you won't forget that community.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Rosendahl.
It's okay. I'd like to let the public speak for one minute.
Okay, if we do one minute because I know some people are scheduled to leave.
We're going to lose our quorum. I don't want to lose a quorum.
Last friendly amendment, I thought of an idea that the DOT, our deputies, when you wanted to talk about Watts and other places, that we organize our deputies to be involved in some form.
I'll take that as a friendly amendment.
Glenn Bailey, one minute for the public comments on this matter. We are close to losing the quorum, colleagues. Glenn Bailey.
Glenn Bailey, I think you're doing the cards in reverse order from when they're submitted. I am a member of the City Bicycle Advisory Committee. However, I'm speaking as an individual. I do support the allocations to help us move along our implementation of, the ongoing implementation of bicycle lanes and the new program of bicycle-friendly streets. It'll be interesting to see how that unfolds. I, for one, am skeptical on the share-o's, so I would reserve the right on this 250,000, depending on when the share-o's study comes out this summer. I know for the San Fernando Valley, the installation on Receta Boulevard in Council District 3, the jury is truly out on that. I've written it a number of times. And so, with that proviso, thank you very much.
Don Ward. Don Ward, followed by Suzanne Bogart.
Yeah, I just want to, what I want to say is a Safe Routes to School program is very important, and we should focus a lot of energy on that because as we move forward in time, it seems like the generations, like, it seems like, you know, when I went to school, I was walking to school, biking to school, skateboarding, taking the bus, those kind of things. And this generation is being deprived of that, putting in work for that kind of transportation. And I think that goes into our problems with health, obesity, and those kind of things. So, please, do what you can to support the Safe Routes to School program and give it as much funding as possible. It's for our future and for our health, and it'll save us in the long run.
After Suzanne Bogart, Alex Le. After Suzanne Bogart, Alex Lance.
Good morning. My name is Suzanne Bogart, and on behalf of the L.A. County Public Health Department, I want to let you know that we support Safe Routes to School. I am thrilled to be here today to see the vision of building healthier communities in action right here in the city of L.A. I'm a mom, and as a mom, I'm not sure what's harder, getting my kids to turn off the TV and be more active, or watching them get teased for being overweight. As a public health servant, I'm not sure what's harder, updating our policies and budgets to protect our communities, or paying for it later in billions of dollars of healthcare costs. What is good for the waistline is good for the bottom line, and helping our communities to be more bikeable and walkable is priceless. Through the grant I administer, we are supporting Safe Routes to School. We can provide your city with data to drive decision-making, to make sure that we are prioritizing safe routes in our communities with the highest rates of childhood obesity. We support the development of educational and encouragement campaigns. Reforming the norm takes time, but making the healthy choice the easy choice can happen in an instant. Obesity is one of the most complex problems we are facing. We all play a role in the solution, and I'm confident, together, we can make our communities healthy places to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Alexis Lance? Lance, you have one minute, ma'am.
Hi, Alexis Lance with the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition. We are here to support the citywide Safer to School Strategic Plan. This is a program that was approved with the bicycle plan, or it's a program of a newly-approved bicycle plan, and it will make Los Angeles more competitive for state and federal Safe Routes to School dollars. And most importantly, it'll improve the safety of our streets for our most vulnerable citizens, our children. This is a plan that will help prioritize the schools in our communities that have the greatest need, based on collision and safety data. We also recommend that socioeconomic data be used as well. We know that in our low-income communities, we have higher rates of obesity and higher rates of students walking and bicycling to school, and there are also higher rates of collisions. We also ask that a Safer to School Task Force or Advisory Committee be developed, as Councilmember Alakon has suggested, to help oversee this project and bring city agency staff, parents, teachers, students, public health, LEPD and community advocates to the table to oversee this project. Integral to it as well is the need for a pedestrian coordinator.
Thank you. Jessica Mini? M-E-A-N, Manny?
Good morning, council members. My name is Jessica Mini. I'm the California Policy Manager for a national nonprofit called the Safe Routes to School National Partnership. We're thrilled to see the city of Los Angeles, and we support the DOT's proposal to develop a citywide strategic Safe Routes to School plan. For those of you who might not know, there are state and federal dollars currently available for all cities in California to make it safer and more encouraging for children to walk and bike to school. By doing a plan like this, we'll increase the competitiveness and the effectiveness of our strategies, and I highly encourage us to support this. We have submitted a comment letter that all council members should have a copy of, that we've had many groups sign on to that has specific recommendations. Alexis Lance just read off most of them. One of the most important ones I want you to hear is that, in addition to collision data, I really think that another factor, and Councilmember Alakon spoke a little bit about this, is that we need to look at socioeconomic factors. We know that people in low-income communities tend to have higher accident collision rates and as well as higher levels of obesity, so it's critical to use that as another way of prioritizing our investments. But again, an investment in local dollars like this are going to bring home more state and federal dollars to make our communities more walkable and bikeable.
Mary Ann Fogler? Mary Ann Fogler, and then we'll go one more downtown to Arnold Sachs, and that'll be our final on number six.
Yeah, good morning. I enjoy riding bikes myself, and I still like to, but I have a problem with my feet real bad, and I have neuropathy, and I have medical problems. See, if you're not in good health, and you can't walk a long ways, it's a different matter here. And people who are, really are, can't walk a long ways. It's not good to go just in a wheelchair, because you don't get exercise. But, I know you're only giving one minute, but anyway, having, making that point is that you need to respect those disabled. But there's, we're talking about now, here in Van Nuys, I'm going to hurry, the busway here that they want to price through, that's not going to be good for bikes. Sepulveda Boulevard is more idea, because it's more evenly proportioned, it's wider. So, there'd be enough room there, and they don't need cars coming out like a village. We don't want that, and we don't want redevelopment in Van Nuys, like Ernie Bernardi said. So, they're just going to do build big high-rises down here, folks. And Van Nuys, you're going to be very sorry if you bring them in. And don't bring in that village-style pass, busway. It's very bad for Van Nuys. It's bad for the bikes, too. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Rosenau to close.
Thank you, colleagues. I know we're in a stressed timeframe here.
No, no, no. I'm sorry, miss, I'm sorry, there is a card, Arnold Sachs, I'm sorry, downtown.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. I'm almost positive that when Wendy Gruel was head of the Transportation Committee, she initiated some safe school studies. So, I'm just wondering, this is like the third year of spending money on safe school studies. You're spending $1.1 million on bike lanes, which works out to about $73,000 per district, and $1.2 million for the safe school study, which works out probably to $74,000 per district. And I also remember, there was some discussion about the red light cameras and how those were designated for each district, but a lot of the cameras went to intersections where they weren't really necessary. So, what's the input for the public on deciding exactly where these bike lanes will end up being? Thank you.
All right, Ms. Rosenau?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues, for being here. This is another major day in moving forward, a plan to do with pedestrians, and it's a work in progress. I thank you all for your comments. I especially thank the cycling community that are out there that came in to make their comments. I appreciate it very much, and I ask for an eye vote.
All right, thank you. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tab late to vote.
Ten eyes.
Next item, please.
That brings us to item number eight, called Special for Cards.
Number eight. Number eight is up. And Mr. Alakon?
If I may, I'd like to...
You want me to call these folks up, or you want to introduce them, and then we could just?
If I could just describe what we're doing. Colleagues, item number eight relates to somebody who had great impact on the northeast San Fernando Valley, just a tremendous leader in a, sort of glamorous way. This, Marie Harris was a person who believed that Pacoima should have all the beauty of any other community. She talked of chandeliers and velvet and banquet halls, and she was always inspiring to the community. She created the Back to Pacoima and We Love It Expo, and Miss Teenage Image Pageant Review in 1974. She helped to organize Miss Sugar Way Robinson Teen Pageant. But more than anything else, she was, she was one who believed that everybody should be proud of the community that they come from. Mr. Councilmember Bernardi, excuse me, in 1986 gave her the title Honorary Mayor of Pacoima. She helped develop Pacoima's Community Center, and for all the years that I had worked in community service, particularly when I worked for Mayor Bradley, Marie was a constant presence in every single kind of meeting you could think of, whether it was the Economic Alliance for the San Fernando Valley, Board of Directors, Children's Museum Commission, the San Fernando Valley Fair Commission, Valley Vote, Pacoima Chamber of Commerce, and the annual Pacoima Christmas Parade. But even the shopping center on Glen Oaks and Van Nuys Boulevard was one of the things that she fought to bring to Pacoima, because she believed Pacoima deserved a quality shopping center. And so, when she passed in 2009, many people felt that there should be a tribute in her name, and we believe we've come up with something that would be absolutely perfect, and that is to dedicate Glen Oaks and Van Nuys Boulevards as Marie Harris Square. And so, a number of family members are here, would like to, I would like to especially recognize her daughter, Rollyn Naveha, and say that this truly was an inspiration that she worked on with her family and in my office. And we think this is a very appropriate tribute for somebody who has so much positive impact, but more than anything else, has created positive attitudes, and that's what Marie was all about, and this square will continue that legacy. So, with that, if I may...
We have nine cards, Mr. Alakon. If you want to call them all up?
Yes. No, please. If Rollyn could speak first, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
If we could limit this to one moment, that'll, we don't want to lose our quorum, so if we could just...
Good morning, Mr. President.
Thank you.
And council members, it is my esteemed honor to stand before you today and hear this motion read into the records, highlighting some of my mother's monumental achievements accomplished. Her compassion for the communities was never-ending. She had so much pride in Pacoima. Growing up under her tutelage, I embarked on every project that she initiated, and I gained a wealth of knowledge and ability and achieved, and can achieve things that I didn't even know I could achieve. I am so honored today, and I just want to say thank you for recognizing my mother's legacy in this fine community.
Thank you. Herbert Piken? Followed by Fannie Long?
It's hard to believe it's that long, but in 1983, we first thought about the possibility of developing a shopping center in Pacoima. Nobody would go near it, Pacoima at that time. It was just, it never, never had been, a shopping center had never been built there before. We were approached by several people, including Marie and the councilman, to, with the possibility of developing this, and we did. We were very successful at finally in getting it all built, and the stores opened in 1985. We've never had a vacancy, we still own it. We never had a vacancy in that center from the time we built it, and it's been one of our most successful centers ever. And we thank the city of Pacoima. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Bodas?
Thank you. All I would like to say is, because of our family being part of a legacy of Pacoima, the Harris families as well has been a legacy on the longtime residents in this community, and we see it fit that this would be called the Marie Harris Square.
Thank you. Fannie Long?
I'm Fannie Long. In the essence of time, I will defer to my next speaker.
Mel Wilson? Followed by Yolanda Mase?
Good morning, council members. This is Mel Wilson, and I just wanted to let you know that Marie Harris is an icon in our community. I grew up in Pacoima. I worked with her side by side, and I can tell you, every positive thing that went down the last 30 years plus in Pacoima, Marie Harris was associated with. The shopping center, the Enterprise Zone, the Pacoima Expo, a number of other things. She had a mission to change the community, and I'm just proud that this city is going to honor the most busiest intersection in our community for Miss Marie Harris. Thank you very much.
Yolanda Mase? Followed by James Smith?
Good morning, or should I say, good afternoon, city council members. My name is Yolanda Mase, and I stand before you in agreement that for the motion to designate the intersection of Van Nuys Boulevard and Glen Oaks Boulevard in Pacoima as Marie Harris Square, this square would be a constant reminder to the residents of the community and the neighboring community that if someone stands up and does the work, that is needed, that change will and can come about. Due to this incredible woman that was short in stature, but very passionate, she was mighty, she impacted so many people around her, and isn't that what we want in our communities? When it becomes difficult, we want people to stand up and actually embrace our community, not run away from it, not run away from the challenges. And this woman brought forth that, and I believe that if we do this today, that it will inspire our future, and that this will be a wonderful, loving memory of Marie Harris. So, let's vote this one in.
James Smith, followed by Patricia Brown?
Good morning. I'm James Smith, and I worked with Miss Harris for 10 years, and putting on seven of those years back to Pacoima Expo. Thank you.
Patricia Brown, followed by Shane Coleman?
Yes, I'm Patricia Brown, and I'm here in recognition that you vote in Marie Harris Square. She is an icon. She's a beautiful woman, and she didn't want the people of Pacoima to move. She wanted them to stay there, build this, build our little city up, and make it worthwhile for our kids to grow up and grow up with their families there. And I really would love to see that corner of Van Nuys and Glen Oaks be called Marie Harris Square. Thank you.
Shane Coleman, our final speaker.
Good morning. I'm Shane Coleman, director of Here is a Life, a Multimedia Music Program in Pacoima. And with the understanding that trying is the absence of doing and not doing, Marie Harris, as a board member, taught our youth and our staff to plan your work and then work your plan. And so, and it never had to do with the color of your skin, your background, but to live a quality life. And so, we're wanting this to pass for Marie Harris.
Mr. Alakon?
Council members, very briefly, I know we're running late. I do want to mention that Howard Berman has submitted a letter of support, and I do have a certificate, assuming you will vote for this, that says happiness is Marie Harris Square, that I'd like to present to the family. This was a great lady. If we had 100 Marie Harris's, I guarantee you, Los Angeles would be a wonderful place to live in.
And let's cast the vote, colleagues. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tab late to vote.
Ten eyes.
Unanimous. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Labonge. We will make that fourth with. Mr. Clerk, next item? Mr. Clerk, mistress dismissed, ready to depart.
That brings us to item number 10, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Sachs, number 10. One minute on number 10. Arnold Sachs, number 10.
Thank you. Speaking of budgets, if you did a better job of budgeting your time for your council meetings, you wouldn't have to worry about losing your quorums. But that being said, make mandatory a 10:00 a.m. starting time? That means council members should be in council chambers at 10 o'clock.
That's not the subject. It's the budget, Mr. Sachs. Stay on the subject matter.
Mr. President, it's the council's, they're setting hearings for the budget.
That's not about the council's start time, sir.
Boy, it would help if you actually read it.
All right, Mr. Sachs, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sachs. You're completed for today. Mary Ann Vogler here. Mr. Hawkness, Vogler?
Hello, CRA Council. Mr. Rosenau, can I speak to you from after the meeting? Thank you very much. I told you time and time again that you're getting credit from the booties, and it needs to stop. Credit needs to be stopped giving to you, and giving to you, like, you're, you know, I mean, you're spending and spending and spending. You know, the federal government is going to shut down. We got a real serious problem here, folks. I need your attention.
This is about the budget, Mary Ann. About the budget.
You know, Janet Hahn is paying attention to me. She's the only one here. I see Rosenau is paying attention to me.
It's about the budget.
I'm talking about the budget here, Mr. Zine.
Oh, you're not.
I certainly am.
Well, you're talking about Ms. Hahn and Mr. Rosenau.
I'm talking about the, I'm talking about their attention here, listening to what I'm saying.
Well, we're talking about the budget, ma'am.
And you're arguing, you know.
No, I'm not, I'm making a statement.
Yeah, you are. You're arguing, and you're shutting down speakers here, and this is all, all aligned.
You know what? You're now completed with your comments. Thank you. Number 15, on this item, open the roll. Close the roll. Tab late to vote.
Ten eyes.
Next item, please.
That brings us to item 15, called Special for Cards.
Next item, number 15, our final item for the day, colleagues. Mr. Sachs, downtown, number 15, sir.
Yes, sir, you pile of crap.
Mr. Sachs, your comment was inappropriate. No further comment from you.
I didn't say anything.
Okay, on this matter, open the roll. Close the roll. Tab late to vote.
Ten eyes.
Thank you very much. All right, colleagues, any announcements?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Posting referred.
There are excuses on the desk.
I'll approve the excuses.
Councilmember Labonge requests big excuses on June 1 and June 3 due to city business that meets council policy.
That's approved.
Councilmember Parks requests to arrive at 11 on April 6 due to city business that meets council policy.
That's approved.
The desk is clear.
Desk clear. Announcements, colleagues? Any announcements? Mr. Labonge, announcement?
Great congratulations to the Dodgers for opening day victory yesterday.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Any other announcements, colleagues? Okay, any adjourning motions? Seeing none, this concludes this council meeting. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Mr. Clerk, the roll. We are now adjourned. We will return on Tuesday. Have a lovely weekend.
All right, Johnny. Thank you for everything.